All right, I got 6:30. We'll start the meeting, we'll always start with the questions.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. This meeting has brought public comments. Citizens of Bloomfield who have signed up between 6:00 and 6:30 will be given the opportunity to speak to the council on the topics of recent firing and resignation of city employees and responsibilities of elected officials. Each person will be limited to five minutes. That's only to make it fair so we can get as many people that want to comment as possible. First person, Alan Chesser.
He went to go get some waters, and I believe he just pulled it up.
Okay.
So if you're gonna skip him, he'll...
All right, Travis Clark.
My name is Travis Clark. I was interim superintendent at the time of all this went down. I don't really have anything to say, other than that council has been seeked. So I can't say a whole lot, but if anybody has any questions for me, I will be glad to answer them at this time. If not, I will give someone else the rest of my time. Thank you.
I have one, wait, look.
Yes?
Were you asked to keep information from the seat?
No. Or, oh, yes, actually, we were, yes. We were told, we were told by Chris that if anything, any illegal activity happened in the city, to bring it to him, not to the chief, and then he would determine whether it was enough to seek action with the police department.
Can I have to remind you of your calling?
Absolutely.
Karen Beederman.
I'm gonna take the...
Hold on just a second.
Are you gonna take the rest of this time?
I'm gonna take the topic once, and I'll leave it all together.
Okay, all right.
So I am Karen Beederman. I'm the former city clerk before I was terminated by mayor. I've got a question slash comment. So in March of 2022, you made a purchase, $10,000 to buy a parking lot across from Stockyards Bank. However, to my knowledge, you failed to let the council know of major repairs needed to this parking lot before you made the purchase. You decided to take that on, on your own. I asked you when it was King Southern Bank. You needed to speak with whoever was in charge. It's a huge hole in the parking lot. You can see where it goes down to the creek. Please have them fix that. It's in violation of our own ordinances. Nothing. I asked you again, when the new bank took over Stockyards Bank. Please, have that fixed. Nope, it was allowed for a fence to be put up. So I have asked for how many years now? Quite a few years. So I'm gonna make it real short and quick. Council, did you know the cost to repair is estimated between $156,000 to $170,000? That was a great purchase. That's with our tax money. And again, here's the hole. In this part, I know you all can't see all this, and I apologize for that. You know this property? You should. You're friends with them.
What is it?
I don't remember saying the name.
It's on the corner, Bart.
There you go. It's on there on the corner. You complained about it.
Yes, I have.
Councilman Tina Long complained about it. Nothing is done. Nothing. I've been on the mayor for three years. How can we send out ordinances? And people are paying fines, yet this property is allowed to sit in total disrepair. Councilmen over here and Councilwoman Tina Long, they both brought it up to the mayor at a council meeting. His reply, he leaned back, folded his arms, and said, "He's my, he's a friend of mine. I'll take care of it." When? When are you gonna take care of that? Okay, that answered my question.
I don't know if I'm allowed to comment back. I don't wanna take her time. I was gonna wait till she's done.
That's the purpose of this. Any questions directed to Chris or any of us...
So I'm allowed to take her five minutes to respond?
You can respond, yes, that's the point.
Are we pausing?
I pause for the question.
Okay. Stockyards Bank property, just so everybody knows, at the time when we done the construction work downtown, when the whole town got dug up and had to put that culvert in, we were trying to tie over from Chaplin over to the other side. We had to go through a rental property there on the other side of Stockyards Bank. We had to get an easement through Stockyards Bank to go underneath that parking lot. They would, they refused to give me that easement until I bought the property. They wanted it for 100 grand. It kept going and kept going and kept going, till finally they said, "We'll sell it to you for 10,000. You can pay us five upfront, pay us five later." To get that water line back on the other side of that property, that's why I spent the $10,000 on that parking lot. I knew at the time, because our previous superintendent Scott Thompson told me, to fix that hole, we would have to replace that whole culvert underneath. We couldn't patch it, and it was gonna be a little over 100,000 dollars at the time. With inflation, now it's higher. So I haven't addressed that issue yet with the council, because I don't know if we wanna invest that much money in it right now. I don't even know what we wanna turn that property into. I'd kinda like it to be public parking, so that businesses can open it up for planning and zoning. We have no public parking, so any new businesses can come to town, because all the parking's taken up. When I addressed public parking with that lot with the clerk, she quoted, "Oh heck no, I will not see us pay that money for a parking lot."
Exactly.
So I haven't done anything with it since. That's what happened with the parking lot. I didn't buy it with your tax dollars to adjust...
You did buy it with our tax dollars.
And the council approved it at the time, when I bought it.
They did not know of the repairs.
So...
Did not know. Keep that in mind. He totally blindsided you with this. And also, also, one more, one more thing, yet had this been fixed originally, when King Southern Bank owned it, wouldn't even be an issue. I know I've got limited time.
The stockyards, and they didn't wanna invest 100,000 into that hole.
So we did.
And asked me to put up a fence to keep from people falling in it, and an insurance claim. And I said, "Yes, please put up a fence before somebody gets hurt. It was their property, not mine. I wasn't gonna fix it. I bought it to get the easement, to get that water underneath that, that parking lot."
Again, it should have been fixed. We should not be responsible to fix something that high. You can twist it however pretty you wanna make it. Also, Mayor, here's, and I know I'm running short, so just real quick, here's the bill. Chris, this sat on your desk for two weeks. Paid late, so it's double the fee. Here's another one for ya. One of your favorite accounts. And I'm gonna leave that account alone right now, but it'll come out. One of your accounts, it was sent to Collections for non-payment. How does that happen?
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Okay, that would be the Bloomfield Christmas parade. How does that happen that they went to Collections?
They had wrote a check to the school. It got sent to another school, and the school that was supposed to receive that check, it didn't get transferred over. It took them months with working with those schools to figure out where that check went to, to pay for that invoice. It got final. They saw that, yes, they turned us over to Collections.
Yes, they did.
But it's because it was a mishap in where that check went. They understood it and made it right, and we got through that.
And how many months did that take? Because usually when I call Collections...
I'm not for sure, but...
Okay, usually when I call Collections, I can get things settled right away, not in your own due process.
As far as the late payment goes on the invoice, everybody knows I come in on Fridays to, to sign what I need to be signed.
No.
I urge all the city clerks to pay the bills when the invoice has come in.
Correct.
If they need to be paid, they're already, if it's an AT&amp;T bill or whatever, you already know the expense. I'll sign the invoice after the fact, but go ahead and pay it.
No.
Now, do I have to write my name on the invoice before you pay it? You already know what the bill is? That's the way I handle things, so.
It sat in his folder for over two weeks.
If I need to change that in the future, I'll do that, but I don't see that.
That's it.
I have a quick question for Karen. Going back to the property that was purchased up here, is there any documentation in any of the meetings, the notes of the council members did know?
None.
That we could go back on and...
None.
Okay. Speakers, if you could come towards the middle or even that end, otherwise your face will appear black because of the brightness in the background, please.
Does anyone else have any comments on Karen's statement?
I have a comment, and that is just that, I think it's okay to address the public, but this is supposed to be where you're addressing the council. And so if you could, if people could stand over here in a way that we could actually see them better, because when you look this way, you can't actually see.
Okay, you want me to go back to Alan Chesser?
All right. First of all, I say thanks to y'all having the meeting. We got it together. I think we've been a lot on misinformation on a lot of things. My own public opinion here is need on this other. Let the investigation work its way out. I don't wanna address some of those issues that we just talked about, because I don't know the whole detail, but I'm just gonna throw it out there. Don't care who likes it or not. I don't see how we can stand here and push everything on mayors. And I've lived here my whole life. I've seen some good ones, I've seen some bad ones. But as of right now, I can't see how the mayor's messing up when you've got board members, a lawyer, meetings, and all. And I don't see how this breaks the law, this breaks the law, this covers up the law. We listen to too much Facebook of what's going on. Let, if I understand this correctly, the sheriff department is gonna take over the investigation? If I'm correct, let him do his job, and when it's all said and done, then start pointing fingers. Because we're probably pointing in a lot of misdirections and nothing against nobody. I know just about everybody here it just pertains to. And I heard a lot of comments at the last meeting, and I will say, Mayor, you got the right thing, leave him. Who wants to play with the candy blue coat? When that was not the time. And I got a couple more comments. Number one, Danny Case here in Bloomfield, he got destroyed over Facebook. One of the finest gentlemen you ever wanna be around in Bloomfield. Mr. Penarola got destroyed because he called an order to the meeting, and that, we're not gonna get no answers from this people. Let all the facts come out, then we'll come to a meeting and have our... Most of these officials here, I know most of them, I don't know him real well, but they're elected officials. If something's wrong, then maybe we need to change it in the next election. We're making something from New York City, and really, we ain't just a little bit better than Mayberry Town, and I've lived here my whole life. That's all I've got to say.
I have a comment on that.
Go ahead, I ain't answering nothing, because I ain't under no court.
I'll make a comment then. What he was saying was, we should let the investigation into Scott go, which I agree with, that it's obviously already turned over, and that's definitely what it sounds like. You're saying, I guess what he's saying is, the firing of two employees by one man is not something we should investigate, we should let that go? Is that what anybody else heard? I'm just wondering, too, if he would answer my question, so what I'm hearing is, he's correct.
I did answer it when I said, "Let the court system and the man do his job," then the court system would take over from there, so.
With the investigation on Scott, right? You're right about that.
There we go. I didn't mention nobody's name. I didn't mention nobody's name.
Now, I'm asking you. That's what I'm saying. So you're saying, let the Nelson County Sheriff be go job, take over the investigation. You're 100% right.
Bingo. And however it turns out.
Hold on, guys, hold on. You, okay, it was his turn to talk. If you signed up, you can talk.
Oh, you guys just said if they have questions for...
I know.
I thought we were...
She's commenting, she's just making a comment on his statement.
I thought we were allowed to do that.
Are you on the list?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So all I'm saying is, he's correct. The investigation is now out of our hands with the Nelson County Sheriff in Scott. He's saying, let everything else go, so that means Karen and Steve and everything else that's happened in the last few weeks, we just, his suggestion is just to let it go. That's why I'm just commenting that, so.
Right.
That's it.
I'd just like to know, are we allowing the people to talk and ask us questions for those fun? Are we allowing the public to comment on people's comments? I thought this was for them to ask us.
Them to ask us questions. I would make, I would comment.
Everybody's got a chance to talk, right?
Yes. I will comment a little bit on what you're saying. A lot of things, I know Chris has the authority to do some things without informing the council, but I can understand that, because it was a bigger city. This is a small town. He doesn't have to inform the committee or the council, but it would be in his best interest to inform the council, so that we are all abreast and know what he is planning on doing, so that we might have a chance to voice our opinion on it. He doesn't have to, but if one of us is met by one of y'all on the street, and you ask us as a council member, "What, what happened with this?" And we look like, "We don't know nothing about it." That doesn't look good for us. He should keep us more informed than he does. That's my comment to Mr. Chesser's comments. Anybody else?
I have a question. When's the next election for mayor?
In three and a half years.
Yeah. That, it will be, the election is just last year, so.
You got a question?
Hold on, hold on. We need to stick with our list and proceed through, and if you, are you on the list?
At the end, when we get through all these people that have signed up, then we can ask, and we'll do it, you know, in order, in an orderly form. Anybody else that has any questions or comments, then we will take them at the end. We set this up to be from 6:30 to 8:30, just so that we could have time. You know, I will get your question, if you can wait till the end, we have to, everybody else has to get done.
We do ask, so you're a resident of Bloomfield also?
He is.
I'm not a resident, but I own a land and I have a which valid business license. I run a little greenhouse.
That, that counts.
I'll just, the agenda that they put forth does say, "Citizen of Bloomfield," but I contacted the League of Cities, and they said, "We are not allowed to do that." So all of anybody here can speak, just so you know. It says, "Citizen of Bloomfield," but it's open to everybody. So you live in city limits or not.
Gene Thomas? Skip down. Nathan. He's taking the rest of Travis's time.
Nine minutes.
Okay. How much was it?
Nine.
Nine minutes?
About what it'll take. Got a lot to say. I don't really wanna be here doing this, but I feel like I'm in a unique position to shed some light on some of the details that a lot of people are wondering about. We know there's a lot of speculation, and there's a lot of hearsay, so I'm gonna try to fill in the gaps and give some truth, as far as I know it. My name's Nathan Jones. I'm gonna read from this, just so I keep everything concise. Been a resident of Bloomfield for over 13 years, and almost a lifelong Nelson County man. I love this community, and I served on the Bloomfield City Council during the administration of the previous mayor, Rhonda Hagan, and with the current mayor, Chris Dudgeon, for several years. And currently serve as a city representative on two other local boards. Like I mentioned, I really do not wanna be here talking to you guys about this under these circumstances. I find this whole thing very sad and disturbing, what it's done to our community, mainly, because as I see it, this, this could have all been fairly easily prevented. Several years prior to any investigation by Officer Steve Cameron, concerns about illegal and unethical activities on the part of Public Works Superintendent Scott Thompson had been brought to the attention of Mayor Chris Dudgeon. In fact, at least four different individuals that I know of personally approached the mayor with information and various concerns regarding the ex-superintendent's activities. Two previous city employees, two city council members. I know this because I was one of those city council members. I was on the city council at the time that I brought my concerns to the mayor more than four years ago. My concerns, as well as those of other individuals, were not addressed in any noticeable way by the mayor. Furthermore, it does not appear that any substantial investigation was conducted or requested by the mayor into those concerns, because despite years of ongoing illegal activities that were either known or should have been known to the mayor, it does not appear that there was any formal reprimand issued to the ex-superintendent prior to his resignation. He never was actually fired. This all sets precedent for how this mayor handles employee issues as well as other issues. Why didn't the mayor hold Scott accountable when he had the opportunity to do so? In my opinion, as he's done several other times, he made it personal. By the mayor's own admission, he was friends with Scott Thompson. And as we all have a tendency to do, he allowed his friendship to cloud his judgment, and it came, as it came to disciplining his friend. It was too personal for him, and as such, the illegal and unethical activity was allowed to continue. I'll give you another example as far as this goes. We had a drainage issue that come, that came up here on Depot Street a while back. I was on the council at the time, this is several years ago. The discussion on this topic ended up a little heated between the mayor and the property owner, local business owner. Who, full disclosure on this, the owner of the hardware store is my brother-in-law is the person in question here. Okay? So the mayor felt that this business owner had made worse some drainage issues because of some improvements made to their property. This, this fact was actually never really ever questioned, because it was clear that he had made improvements, and it was clear that the drainage issue was made worse by the issue, by the changes. But ultimately, the water was coming down from the city park. It used to run inside the warehouse, so changes had to be made on his part. And the water, once it was made to not go in the warehouse, had nowhere to go. The ditch that it needed to outflow to was, was not there. It was malfunctioning, so it needed repair. The mayor made this issue in particular personal and allowed his feelings to dictate how the city acted. The business owner in question had offered the materials to make this repair at cost, no profit to him. He was gonna provide those to the city to complete the work. We had a city council meeting in regards to this. All in all, I think it was gonna cost around $3,500 in materials and for some culvert pipes and some time and equipment from the city to clean up the ditch. After much deliberation, which it should have been pretty simple, it was agreed by the council that the work would proceed, and the council included verbiage in the vote that the local store would provide the materials, since it was a cost savings. He was gonna give those at cost, no profit. However, when the time came, due to the heated nature of the debate, he refused to allow the city to get the materials from the local store, and instead, paid more to purchase those materials elsewhere. It was, as once it was all said and done, the small project fixed the drainage issue. As far as I know, it's still working, and we've got no issue here today, but it was made a major issue. The major made this personal, and a division exists to this day between the city and the local hardware store, to the point that the city no longer does business in the store. It's kinda mutual, due to everything that happened, but you know, it's hard to say what could have happened if it was handled differently. The mayor should be the one that can rise above these sorts of small conflicts to bring people together, instead of dividing the community, as happened now, and as I have seen happen in other circumstances. Karen Beederman also did not appear to be a favorite of the mayor, and it showed in how he interacted with his city clerk. While she should be commended for remaining vigilant, and without her continued efforts, this issue with Scott may have never come to light, and the fraud could still be ongoing. But even though she tried repeatedly to bring up issues about financial discrepancies pertaining to Scott, to the mayor, the concerns appear to have continuously fallen on deaf ears. And I think this explains why she felt the need to speak out so often at council meetings and otherwise. So when Officer Sir Steve Cameron came along, Karen appeared to have finally found an authority within the city that would take action and investigate. And let's be clear, information about illegal activity or unethical behavior uncovered by Officer Cameron, though he's great, did a great investigation with the assistance of Karen, Travis, and Randy, was generally readily amenable to the mayor if he only chose to look for it. And it's clear that some of the wrongdoing was not only known by the mayor, but that some of it was approved by the mayor and covered over by the mayor after the fact. And this is not to implement the mayor in any wrongdoing. This is just to say that, again, he allowed it to be personal, and he allowed his personal relationship with the person affected to dictate how he acted towards them. Many, most of the wrongdoings don't appear to have been hidden very well at all. Some were quite blatant, and just as blatantly overlooked by the mayor. As many of the issues that have been now confirmed as fact are the same allegations made by us and others so many times over so many years. The citizens of Bloomfield, especially those that had tried to raise the red flag on possible issues, were and really still are owed an apology for that lapse of judgment. Okay? The city is owed, and the citizens are owed an apology for not taking the concerns seriously and acting on those concerns. Now, I'm not here to drag anybody down. This is not personal for me. I've always liked Chris Dudgeon in the personal and the business interactions that I've had with him. I wish the best for him. I think this has all probably been really hard for him, and understandably so. You know, we all have things going on, and I'm sure that some of the things have been spread around and said, you know, it's difficult to him, for him, and so. But that being said, I do believe that, that we are entitled to the truth, and whatever, you know, whatever that truth may be. And so I'm trying to lay that out now, as best as I know it. But as it stands...
Thirty seconds.
Okay? We have little to no explanation from the mayor or justification for the termination of Officer Cameron and Ms. Beederman so roughly, so how can these terminations be in the best interest of the city when it leaves its citizens so vulnerable? How can we justify allowing so much to go unchecked for so long as it pertains to Scott Thompson, but apparently so little to fully terminate the employment of the remaining senior city employees, the two key employees that uncovered the wrongdoings and acted on the information in the best interest of the city?
Finish, Nathan, you can have your time.
Okay? Thank you. How much time?
Look, whatever you need.
Okay? So, so there's that. Okay, so we have all that. Then, as we all know, almost immediately upon hearing of the terminations of the two employees, Karen and Steve, we have Travis and Randy, who have resigned now in protest. Now, this alone speaks volumes to the work environment inside the city. And contrary to everything that we're hearing from the mayor, shows incredible employee camaraderie amongst the majority of the city employees. I have only a few times in my whole life witnessed another person give up their job, their livelihood, to support a fellow employee who they felt was wrongfully terminated. Once or twice ever in my whole life. One person did it for me, and I married that person. I'm serious. I'm serious. I can tell you, in my experience, we cannot overstate the importance that this act holds in this conversation, because to do that is a major act of, I mean, you're putting everything on the line, and so it takes, it takes a lot. And so these men, I believe, they fully expect to get their jobs back, and I believe that they should have, whatever is required to make that happen, and allow them to return comfortably to their previous positions. They hope and expect that someone will do the right thing. They believe in the integrity of this city and its people. Otherwise, they wouldn't have done what they did. And so now the ball is in the court of the mayor, and possibly to a greater extent, the council. This is when we, as a city, set our precedent on how far we allow the powers of a mayor to go, how we let our city be run. It's hard to separate our personal feelings for business, no matter what the situation. I'm sure many of you have personal feelings about the mayor, about me, or other folks that may speak tonight. And to some extent, it is personal, because this is our town, and we love it. It's heartbreaking to see what has happened. But the key to moving forward is that we must all treat each other with respect, set our personal feelings aside, and make the decisions that are in the absolute best interest for the city. best interest for the city, no matter what that is and its citizens. This is something I'm just not sure, Chris, that you're able to do under these circumstances, and I'm sorry.
Do you want me to address any of that?
Absolutely.
All right. One of the things you talked about was the situation between Mr. Calvert at the hardware store and I and what got brought up in the meeting. As you know, Mr. Calvert had cleared off all vegetation off this hillside back here behind his warehouse to clean it up, work on it, and whatever he was trying to do with bringing tractor trailers in. He had a plot important. It looked, it looked great. When that happened, the property owners behind here down Depot, all of a sudden, all the water that was coming off that hill had nowhere to go. And I understand it was going in his warehouse, and I apologize for that. It's coming off the city park, but these people had no water issues until he cleared that off. When that happened, I contacted Brad Spaulding over in Nelson County. Apparently, he was supposed to have a flood plain study done before he cleared any of that off, and Brad told me that he did not do it. But we, I tried to get with Tony to figure out how we were going to fix this. In the meantime, these people kept having muddy water all up in their door. It was piling up. They wanted me to fix it. I was trying to figure out how I could fix it. If Tony was going to fix it, I didn't feel like it was the city's fault. We talked about it in the council meeting. Tony came to the meeting. In that meeting, he said that I was a hard person to get a hold of, and I told the council that I had set up two meetings with him in that office, and he never showed. That right there, maybe that did aggravate me a little bit, but went on. He said he would provide those products at cost. Well, then the council decided that the city tax dollars should go ahead and pay for that. That aggravated me as well because we didn't cause that issue. We had no problem, the property owners had no problem, until the vegetation got cleared off and the water had nowhere to go but down in their, in their yards. So yes, I did buy the, buy the pipe and have the city employees fix it. And I bought the pipe from Bluegrass Feeding Seed, I think is where I bought it from.
They gave four hundred dollars more money for it.
Well...
Because of what? You're telling part of the story here.
Part of the story is I, I, I paid a little more for it.
You didn't tell the part about they took, they removed the ditch line when they put the city sewers in, which I proved because Ms. Keeling lives right here, says she, she come in by behalf and proves that they did remove that.
Excuse me. We are supposed to allow him to finish before...
I'm just starting to lie to the lie. He's, he's actually telling not, he's not telling the truth.
But we, we set that boundary at the beginning.
Got you.
So you're free to talk and answer just in a moment.
Got you. I'll, I'll get with him personally. It's, no problem.
As far as the other issues that Nathan brought up, I do think it's a, it's a sad situation that I had to terminate two employees. And I know everybody wants to know why I terminated them. What, what was the cause of that? They received termination letters. There's a lot more that I could have put in those termination letters. This has been going on for weeks. This wasn't just done out of the blue. I will give you more information when I can give you more information, I promise. As far as why, Nathan had made a comment that Scott Thompson wasn't fired immediately when we found this out. I'm pretty sure that the Steve, that the police chief Steve recorded our conversations when we brought Steve in or Scott in. It was his recommendation that I should suspend him because everybody in the office just wanted me to do something about it, and we suspended him. And so that's why I suspended him without, and I said without pay. Because as far as I know, he was continuing investigation. We sat Scott down. I said, listen, you're suspended without pay until all this is over. He came in to, on a Tuesday and said, you know what? I resign. And I said, okay. So no, I did not fire him right off the bat. I was in the room with the police chief and Scott Thompson, and that's what was said. So that's all I'm going to do.
I just want to clarify that comment because what I had asked about was the years leading up to that. It's not the investigation of Officer Cameron that it's, that is the concern. It's that Officer Cameron did not have to work hard to find this. You didn't really have to work hard at all because it, most of it was, some of it was known. So I guess the question, the ultimate...
That investigation has been...
No, no. The ultimate question is, no, this is, this is pre, this is pre-investigation. So hopefully, we can comment on pre-investigation. And why, given the repeated attempts to bring this to your attention, I guess, and especially by Karen Beederman, why, given that it appears to be relatively easy to have found out that these things were illegal and unethical, why was an investigation not done? Why was he never cited? Why was he not fired three years ago?
I will comment on all that when I can, I promise.
I have questions for you there.
I have a question pertaining to a little bit of that with Tony. Was it approved, this was before I was on council, but was it approved by the council to purchase the material at cost from Tony?
Yes, sir. Is that to me? I'm sorry. Was that to me? Yes, sir.
Just to go back to the minutes, to the minutes to get the official...
I'll get it.
Were you on there at the time?
I was on there. Yes, and I believe we did.
I believe that Mr. Hammond was the one who read the thing, and it was clearly intended.
The council approved.
Because what we intended to do there was sit down the city, you know, the small community. We want to be able to work these things out as easily as possible. And so we had everybody there willing to do this, and the only conflict was coming from one party here. Really, we had a problem. We wanted to solve it. And so we only had one conflict coming from one side. And ultimately, yes, the verbiage was there in the reading of how we said it, that the materials would be purchased, because it was a specific thing, and it was a rare circumstance that it was... It was actually approved twice because he tried to have a meeting after the fact without me, and I had to come and fight again, but the council approved it two times.
Yes or no question for you.
I'd have to go back and look at the minutes. I'm not going to say yes or no. I'll look at the minutes and then we can answer. But as far as I'm...
If the council approved it, if the council approved it, go back and find the minutes. But if the council approved it, and you went and bought it from somebody else, you went rogue and did stuff on your own because you thought, I don't like him, I'm going to do it.
For no reason, Scott. There was no reason. I didn't know who the guy was when we first started this for no reason. It was ridiculous. I was there every time, by the way, guys. I cleaned the park, the parking lot, the road off. I pressure washed it four times, and I never left the city with mud in the road. And I, I got expensive equipment to come in and blow a special material on these hillsides and all this here to keep that from happening. I was on top of it. And I took, I got with Brad Spaulding. I addressed everyone in the time. He's right. I did miss a meeting with him, but I contacted him. I said, hey, I'm sorry, something came up. I can't make it today. It was, I just couldn't make it. But I did contact him. I didn't leave him hanging. So, and he, and for whatever reason, he decided to buy the pipe somewhere else. I have no idea why. He was mad. It was total spite, for sure. And then I closed their account. It wasn't mutual agreement. I said, I'll tell you what, if, if that's how, I said, Chris, where did you buy the pipe from? Or why did you not buy the pipe from me at cost? And he said, I can buy the pipe wherever I want to. Was exactly what he said. I'll never forget it. And, and I said, that's fine. You can buy everything else in Bardstown as well. I closed their account and haven't done city, I haven't done business with the city since. They have to drive to Bardstown. Travis, where you at? Travis, you guys drive, have been driving to Bardstown for two or three years now, right?
I was instructed by Scott Thompson my first day not to come in with your staff.
What a shame. I'm not like that, guys.
Matt, I just got one question.
We're moving on to the next speaker. Are you signed up? Are you signed up?
I couldn't have, I had to leave. That's one reason.
Okay. He said he has to leave. That's why he couldn't sign up.
So can I ask you a question?
No.
No. Six to six-thirty is what you said.
Who are you?
I'm Depot Naker. Depot.
Okay. All right. He can use some of your time.
It's just one quick second. So since if it was...
Hold on. You want to time it so that we know? Okay.
So if it was approved to buy it at the local hardware store, and he went somewhere else to spend four, five hundred dollars more, whose money, who's replacing that? Because that is a waste of taxpayer money just for a personal vendetta. That, that should not come out of the taxpayers' money, money that we pay to fund the city and have the things we have, because he had personal vendettas against them. And that's all. And that's just my comment.
For no reason.
Who's paying for that money?
You want to address that? Because that was all before me.
I've already said everything I want to say on that issue.
Okay. He, he, he's taking the fifth on that one.
That's not what I said.
He doesn't want to address it.
Yeah, he just doesn't want to address it.
He said, he said all these kinds of things.
For Gene Thomas.
Anyway, between Nathan and Tommy, what they said here today and the things that I spoke with, with the other folks that are from here, Travis and Steve and Karen, I did believe that things should have, could have been handled a whole lot differently. I just would like to ask, if we have a emergency with our water system or anything, where do I need to go to? Who do I need to contact?
Will you, do you want me to answer it?
Yes, please.
Are you done? Or?
No, no. This is my first question.
I've, I've already hired a new public works superintendent. He has the emergency phone. We are contracting with the city of Bardstown right now with their water and sewer. They're helping us with our skater system, our tower levels.
Yeah.
Everything with the water company is running the way it was.
Okay. Anyway, before all this tragedy happened with these folks over here, I've notified Travis that I did have some rowdy business. I live right across the street from 1066, so where the folks with the garden and grass needs to be mowed sometimes. But anyway, they get up there and they do donuts and carry on and drive through the yard. And thank goodness we found a missing pipe that Bloomfield has, but it's still not, it's been addressed yet. I just want to kind of bring that up. And I know Travis was going to come and look at it, and that unfortunately isn't what I'm having right now. Also, on another little bit of business that's kind of different from what's going on here, because I believe everybody's kind of on the same page as I am a little bit, the cameras that are put up here for surveillance on our road systems. I don't, do we have any control or say on the location of these cameras?
Raymond?
Yeah? I strategically put them in those places because the city paid for them.
Gotcha.
I came and spoke at city council, and the council approved them.
Yeah.
So I put them strategically within the area of Bloomfield.
Right.
We just wanted to know if one could be moved back about five hundred feet.
Yep.
Which one?
The one right down the road from 1066.
On 1066?
The one right down Bloomfield Road on 62 down from 1066.
For safety issue.
Because there's, I mean, I personally almost thought about putting a sign up there that says, you know, camera surveillance in use, because that stop sign only works point nine 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 percent of the time. And other than that, zip, zoom. Then I got people up there cutting signs, throwing stuff, tearing out the yard.
All that does, it doesn't affect anything with a stop sign. All it does is bring license plates.
Okay. So if you have a license plate that's not stopping at a stop sign, is that over there?
I cannot give them tickets.
Really? Okay. That, that was one thing that's good.
All that is is a investigative tool for law enforcement. And the reason why I, I was very advocate of the, the flock cameras was when Medica got robbed, and it was the second time, I believe. Once was over here by the hardware store, and the other one was over by Blazers.
Right. I'm all about it. I mean, I'm...
We had the car going up and down in Bloomfield. So guess what? If it comes in Bloomfield, I know what car it is.
I'm just saying, I'm happy that it's there since we don't have C anymore, you know, so it's not a little extra added to the security that we do have. But I just think the placement may, we almost had a really bad wreck right there where people just aren't paying attention. They're zipping and zooming up and down the roads. And, and that, like I'm just saying, that stop sign across from our house does not exist. I mean, you might as well take it down because nobody obeys the rules. Somebody's going to get...
I stop every time I stop.
We, we sit out on the porch and laugh about it. I mean, like, are they going to stop? Are they going, it's a partial stop, it's a no stop. And it's, it's hilarious.
It's the same way on 458.
It's everywhere we go.
Randy Morrison.
My name's Randy Morrison. I was a maintenance tech for the Public Works Department. I just wanted to come up and give my time for anybody that has any questions.
When you told the same thing Travis was told, not to bring...
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Stop. This isn't really a forum for someone to come and ask for questions from...
Yes, ma'am. I signed up before I was aware of that.
Okay. Well, do you have anything that you want to comment on?
I've stopped council. I've been instructed it's best for me to...
To not speak?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, what do y'all think?
You're allowed. When you told the same thing Travis was told, not to bring...
I don't think this meeting was set up for the public to address the public. It was set up for the, the public to ask us questions. So if you don't like, I mean...
I thought we could ask anybody, anybody. That's what it says.
And if he wants to volunteer his mind for us to ask him questions, and we have a lot of knowledge going on, why can't we?
You, you can call him on the phone and ask him a question.
This meeting was set up for the public to address the council. Why can't we? That's how he wants to use them?
Okay, okay. Could you stand over there so that we can also see you?
Sure.
So Randy, when you told the same thing Travis was told, not to bring issues to the chief, did you take it to the mayor first?
Yes, ma'am. I was told to us on March 24th, on Friday, at a town, or at a city employee meeting, and the mayor had called for us.
My only question.
Any other comment?
You want to ask us?
No, I, I think it's, that's the council.
Okay.
Can I have your time in case I need it?
You're more than welcome to.
Thank you.
Leslie, you're up.
Can you give their names?
Yes, Leslie Calvert.
Well, Nathan did almost of what I wanted to say. I was going to ask Chris if there are any discrepancies in accounting, accusations of possible theft, or anything else pertaining to Scott Thompson's feeling in any way ever brought to his attention prior to Steve's investigation, which obviously, I already knew was told by council members. Does that other council member want to confess or say that they told him? Or is that council member maybe not here anymore? That could be possible. Obviously, it was Nathan and other council members, several city employees. We know Karen obviously did, six months into his term from what I hear. So that, I guess that question, that ship has sailed. But we know the answer to that. No matter what he says about it, whether he was told or not, I mean, if he was told, obviously, he should have had investigated years ago, long before this got out of hand. We wouldn't be here right now, or we would have been here years ago, I should say. If, and if he says that he didn't know, if that ends up, I mean, I don't know if he's going to claim that he didn't know. I know that he posted on the city's page on the 24th that there had been suspicion for some time. And I just want to make that clear. He himself said there's been suspicion for some time about Scott Thompson, but now, thanks to Steve Cameron, we have an admission of guilt. So I just want to throw that out there because that, his words. So obviously, he knew, he knew there was suspicion for some time. So here's my, I want to read these. I have permission to read these. These are the termination letters for Karen and Steve. So this might be a small summary, but for Steve, we have four. We have use of profanity, deterioration of a working relationship with the mayor due to personality conflict, negative impact on city employees and officers, saying he was going to resign after the investiga, after the investigation into Scott was over, after it was over. Okay? Karen's, she has three. Speaking out at council meetings at inappropriate times. I'm not really sure what that means, whoever deems the time inappropriate. Talking to waste management about our contract, the city's contract, which is a normal duty of hers from what I understand, and not cooperating with the audit. So those were the reasons given, just so everybody knows. If I'm wrong, correct me, but I think that's right. So I guess my question is, first of all, I did verify that neither Steve or Karen have ever been written up, suspended, reprimanded at all. I know Steve hasn't been here very long. Karen's been here since 2018. We don't even have written up, do you guys know of any write-ups, any reprim, anything for Karen or Steve? Were they written up, disciplined in any way?
I'm not written.
Okay. So then my question is, I was going to ask Chris this question. Do you feel, Chris, that abuse of one's position and theft of city tax dollars, materials, gas, et cetera, is as punishable an offense as the ones I just listed for Steve and Karen?
Punishable offense for who?
Do you think it's as the same, do you think it's as punishable an offense? These two were fired. I just read you guys the reasons they were fired. Do you think abuse of a position, abuse of one's position, i.e. Scott, theft of city tax dollars, materials, gas, et cetera, is as punishable an offense as the ones you gave for terminating Karen and Karen? for terminating Karen and Steve?
I think if anyone committed a crime, they ought to be charged.
Okay.
I've said that to everyone in here and.
Okay, I got you. And I think we determined that you did know about the, the possible theft and didn't have it investigated. Okay, well, here's another question. I think I know this now, but, so when Karen and Steve were at, were fired, was that a one-man decision? Was the council, I think you may have touched on this, Steve, where you guys made aware, was there a vote, was there a meeting? Or who made the decision? Was it discussed with any council member?
It was not.
It was not? Okay.
To answer that?
Because I, I was distracted.
I said, so with Steve and Karen being fired, I said, was any of the council, who was this discussed with? None of the council members? Okay. So we've got, basically it was Chris alone. You made the decision, Chris, to fire them. Okay. So if it comes down to removing Chris from his position, okay, let's just hypothetical. If it comes down to a, a council vote, I guess that's possible from what I understand? Possible? Um, is it unanimous or is it majority rules?
I think it's two-thirds vote.
Two-thirds? It is. Are we sure about that?
I think it's unanimous.
I think it's unanimous in the handbook.
Unanimous all say.
Okay. So what we just decided is that one man can take it upon himself to fire two city employees, okay? But to get him removed, we have to have six people agree. Does everybody agree with that?
Yes.
That's what we're talking about here. Okay, perfect. So then regardless of whether it's unanimous or majority, can a city council member be excluded from voting if a conflict of interest can be proven?
No.
No, so we can exclude anybody for conflict of interest.
For every conversation I've had with, uh, with municipal law orders, all six have a right to vote whether they're friends, coworkers, they go Sunday together.
He can take my time and add to this because I took some.
Just to clarify that because it sounds like they don't know the answer. Any council member or member of the public can request any sitting council member to recuse themselves from any vote and lay out their reasoning. This request can be made of anyone. If the request is made and they vote and it is proven, well, it really don't have to be proven, but if the request is made and they do vote, then they can be brought before the ethics board.
Okay.
That's the procedure. So that doesn't mean they do anything wrong. It just means that if.
Oh, no, no. It wouldn't be a.
Then they can.
I'm not saying any council member did anything wrong. I'm just saying if we feel, or whoever feels, that there's a conflict of interest, I just want to make sure, because otherwise that would make no sense to me. Um, now I have a couple more questions.
Time.
I took somebody's time.
I, I put it on there.
How much of my time is left?
Oh, that was it.
Thank you, I have one more question. Yeah. Chris, were you aware? Oh, sorry. It's only going to take thirty seconds. Chris, were you aware that Steve was scheduled to arrest Scott Thompson on Monday, May 22nd, prior to firing him the Friday before?
I was not aware of any arrests that was attempted to be made.
That was scheduled. It was talked about at city hall, was it not, Steve?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
Not for me, it wasn't.
You're not there very often. Was it Friday?
Who, who got it?
Who, who gave her?
Angie.
Their time, oh, Angie, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for the third second.
Fifteen. Anybody have any comments or?
Don't know.
Anybody have any comments on her?
If anybody wants, she, she read through the termination letter, she kind of, I think she kind of paraphrased, if anybody wants a copy of that termination letter, you can submit an open record request, I will give that to you immediately. I'll have comments on it if you want.
Can I ask you a question? Does the mayor have to have authorization from the city council to fire a city employee?
No.
No.
Or hire. I can fire anybody.
He does not have to have permission or have one phrase in front of council to hire or fire anybody.
What's the process for changing?
But being in a small town where everybody knows everybody, it would, it would look better.
But the statutes, he did not break any statutes.
He does not have to, but it would look better if he did.
Just like I can add to that, just to clarify again, um, many cities do include in their employee handbook. Nathan, you want somebody to yield more time to? Sorry, no.
You know what, I'll give him that time. Let's quit with this stuff.
Yeah, I just, I like, you know, the main thing here, I want people to be informed. If somebody has a question, I want it to be answered. So that's my main objective. So, but, um, steer me, what was your question? Steer me.
Oh, I was wondering if, if he had broken any statutes of protocol by firing without his counsel.
No, so Kentucky is an at-will state. Any employee, anywhere, unless it's part of an employment contract, can be fired at will, which means no reason whatsoever. That's the law. Doesn't make it ethical, but it makes it the law. Now, cities everywhere do implement ethics into their employee handbook and will, for many positions, institute, just what you're talking about was what a lot of people here, I think, are, are wanting and I think what they really expected and thought we had already in place is that key city employees, before they're fired, would be brought before the council, some grounds would be laid out and.
Exactly.
And that would be determined in that way rather than the way it was.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
She'll be.
I've got a question right now. I just want to know, why is it that you're so willing, I'll have her termination papers to you right away? I put in an open record request with you requesting some emails of mine. Yours was, and I should've brought the email, I quote, pretty much, "Due to city shortage, you're going to have to wait till June the 5th." But yet, right now, you just got done saying, "I'll get it to you right away."
June 5th? I, I give you that I was giving you your open records, but I also have to go to a job that actually, that I work full-time for, so I'm trying to do this for the city and get this city back running the way it is and work at the same time. So I did ask for a couple extra weeks before I could get her, her records. So, and I want to get in her computer with people not there, so there's certain situations. I will get you your records. I did give you the date, June 7th, yes.
So, one more question, I guess it would be for the attorney. Is it legal for a city to run without a city clerk?
I'm not here to answer your questions. I'm here to advise the council and the mayor if they have questions.
Is that legal?
Uh, the city does have to have a city clerk, but they are aware that we do not have one right now and that we are working on getting one.
Yes.
We will have one.
Angie? I don't know how to pronounce your last name. Okay.
Thank you all for being here and answering our questions tonight. And I think most of my questions have already been answered. Um, but I would like to ask you, mayor, personally, um, back in March, when you made your post on the city of Bloomfield, you said you wanted to be transparent, you know, about what's going on at the city of Bloomfield. Um, and then two months go by and we hear nothing. And the next thing that we hear is that the two whistleblowers, if you will, are fired. Do you think that was being transparent with us and, and continue to be transparent once they were fired? And, I mean, that's basically my question. Do you think you're being transparent?
The post that I made, I went through our city attorneys to make that post, to get it out to the public because the police chief had brought forth this information in executive session. At that time, and I know we're not, we usually don't talk about executive session, but our city attorney stated that it would be best for us to turn this over to the state police because it shouldn't be handled in-house. At that time, the police chief informed the council that he was very well, um, he had many years of experience, went through that with us. The council kind of said, oh, okay, well, we'll let you do it. I contacted a few days later, uh, a different department and they said the same thing, that it should be transferred over, it should not be handled in-house. I did make a comment about being transparent, but I was also told, you should've never known about an investigation. That investigation should've played out till the end, then you were made aware of it. That's why the sheriff's office is saying, you're not getting any comment. I think a couple council members, one or two, have reached out to the sheriff's office wanting updates on the investigation. That council member was told, no, you are not getting any updates. We will tell you when the investigation's over, when the charges come out, everybody will know what happens. So I apologize. I really wanted to be transparent. This was all new to me. I would've loved to tell everybody everything that was told in that meeting, that was told in the executive. I wanted to get a post out to Facebook because I knew it was going to come out in the paper. The standard was there at that time, so that's the way I handle it. I apologize. I wish I could've told you more about this whole process.
Thank you. Why didn't you say that to begin with? Why didn't you say that to begin with? That was a statement.
Okay, if I don't say your name right, I'm sorry.
I'll say D-Bo.
That's it.
I'm taking minutes. Can you spell it? Just so I know.
D-I-P-E. Steve Delta Indigo Papa Oscar. D-I-P-E. Delta Indigo Papa Oscar.
D-I-P-E.
D-I.
Poppy Dan.
Got it.
Yeah, my name is D-Bo. I'm new to this place. Um, I have a question and I have a comment. So, how soon do you think we'll be getting a new police chief? Now that we don't have one? That's one. And then my comment is, like I said, I'm new here. Uh, I kind of got a gist of this. This is a small town, smaller than where I'm from. I'm from Lexington, so that's big. But I walk into Tony's store, I see someone who I met here, I walk to the doctor's office, I see someone who knows Tony, who knows the guy that I met here, and I'm like, bro, this is, I like this, this is good. I like to, I'm very believing here, so. But, uh, while I was meeting all those people, I was hearing the story of what was going on here, about the mayor and Scott and police chief and I just thought it was a little kind of rough and dandy for a small town, for a small town. And I came to the first meeting that was one, two weeks ago, I think, and I wanted answers, like, what's happening? Mayor, talk to her soon. I had, you have to leave and, but what left, what happened there was, you had rumors going around. I went on the Facebook page, it was shut down, the pages were shut down, and I'm like, what is happening? All I could hear was, mayor's done something wrong. But I'm kind of appealing that, can we make this, this is a small town, everyone knows everyone. At the end of the day, the lawyer's going to call my neighbor, right? Who's going to be left? We are going to be left. Our kids are going to be here, our grandkids are going to be here. The stories that are going to be, the council members' kids, I would remember their names and your grandkids, and we don't want this going on. I would want to appeal that, can we just make this pretty much easy, just if you, if it's possible, have the chief of police come back, have the clerk come back. You are completely wrong. But I was in the library the other day, yesterday, I think, I was making a coffee and somebody was talking about the meeting here today, and there was a rumor, the mayor dead there. It's going around, but this is rumors that keep going. But again, I can appeal. Council members, I appeal to you, I know you probably have more sway here as well. Can you just kind of go back into the classroom like we had it last time we were here? Talk about this. This police chief, he's been good to us. Everyone like, I like him. Talk this things out like we're doing the old ways before, during the days of my father. And that's kind of what I want to say, because dividing this small community isn't worth it. Like I said, our kids and our grandkids will always, we don't want them hearing this story like half of them are calling, you can hear the story if they come in, but we don't want them to hear this. And so, yeah, but yeah, I also had a problem with hearing the fact that, uh, I'm almost that Karen and the chief of police were fired without, like, there was, when you say, um, there wasn't like a warning or like, um, like something like, hey, this is like a, like one strike, two strikes, you do this, you're going to be out. It was sounded like an executive decision by you, Mr. Mayor, without the council members and I personally think it was, I think it could've been handled better. Maybe see council, that's why you have a council members. Ask them for your wisdom. I see a lot of them have gray hair. They probably have.
Don't have any.
It's kind of seek their wisdom, man. I really want to get rid of Steve right now. Is this the best time to do it? Is this the best way to do it? If I'm going to do this, can you put the word out there to community members? Just kind of slip it into the Facebook, that this is the reason why we're firing Steve, kind of, so it's not just all on you. And so, but again, my appeal, and you get first my question, Steve, when I'm getting a new chief of police, my appeal is to stop this things out. Thank you very much.
Addressed his question about the, when are we going to get a new police chief? We have been without a police chief in, in a timeframe before where we were trying to get one when, when Scott Dennis passed away and we had a rough time finding somebody that was retired that would come into work for the wages that we could pay them. And it took a while. So we will be offering that position and we'll, we'll be taking applications. And in the meantime, uh, the sheriff's office, uh, they have deputies that are over here and are still covering our area. They're taking the calls. We still get calls in the office that if we need to report something and we forward them on, contact the sheriff's office. And, uh, I actually seen one of your deputies come down here and asked me today about a call he got, so, um, that will be coming up. We will be hiring energy.
Can I ask a question in your dark side of the police? Question the depot asked.
Give us a minute. At the end. Steve, Chief Cameron.
I'd like you to last, if that's okay.
Okay. Angie Riley.
I really have a comment to you all because I really don't know you, but I do know Steve. I've known Steve for almost thirty years. He was my neighbor and the neighborhood was much safer when Steve lived in our neighborhood. Because unlike some police officers, they don't care, but Steve did. He, he protected our neighborhood and he'll protect this town if you all let him. And he'll do a good job. I mean, I trust Steve with my life and you all could too, if you gave him the chance. I mean, he hasn't been a chief that long and to be fired this quick, you know, it says something about the town, something's going on. You know, and I just don't feel like that's fair. And I think the town deserves more than that. You know? They want to be safe. Yeah, that's just my comment. And y'all can have the rest of my time.
Christina Lee.
Y'all must've been speaking tonight because I figured all my questions would be answered[1604.12]
Y'all must gonna speak tonight because I figured all my questions would be answered, and they have. So what I live with is my opinion. It's not the opinion of everybody in here, but it is my personal opinion, I pay taxes, I vote, and I chose to live here. So my opinion matters, if I'm. My opinion is that we were wrong. Our taxpayer money was taken advantage of, and you all had no say in it, which I find a poem. I don't know how we got here to where the city council doesn't have to be told, or even asked, for these things to take place. This town has been split in half by one person. And we are owed an apology, we're owed a refund, we are owed a lot of things by one person. And I tell you what, we'd operate a lot better if Karen and Steve were back and the mayor resigned.
Do you want, I'm not going to resign, that does not happen. I will continue to do what I've done for this city, moving forward.
Chief Cameron, Steve Cameron, I still call you chief.
Thank you, sir. First of all, I'll thank everybody for being here and supporting me and Karen, and these two courageous men, that gave up their jobs for the right thing and the truth. Secondly, you know, the, I heard the mayor say that the, the, the reasons I was fired were paraphrased. Well, you know, they were cut down a little bit, but you know, one of the reasons I was fired is, then I told him I was gonna resign, and I don't, I didn't ever heard of anybody ever being fired, because I told him after the Scott investigation, I would resign. That's one of the reasons he fired me. Makes no sense, I've never heard of anybody saying, well, hey, when this investigation's over, you know, because we don't get along, before having problems, I'll be more than glad to resign. He said, I accept your resignation right now, and it was recorded. I accept your resignation right now, and as of right now, you consider yourself not employed by the city of Bloomfield. I said, I didn't resign, I told you after this investigation was over, I would resign. He said, I accept your resignation. I said, have you fired me? He said, no, then I'll be at work Monday. So, that's just one of them. Now the others, profanity, you know, yeah, you know, I've been a cop for a lot of years, folks, and I've used some profanity, especially when somebody's on, you know, somebody's out there saying, well, we've got allegations and accusations, when all along, he's telling the, the media that, well, we only got accusations and allegations against Scott, but Scott already admitted. So an allegation is not a confession, an accusation is not a confession, but that's the way he put it. So when we had words again, and we argued again, and we have argued, we had words, and there's been some foul language, you know, I've been a cop for years, and that's just what we do, sometimes it slips out, so. But, uh, yeah, I, I use some profanity, but, you know, he didn't say I'm gonna fire you for that. And as far as me upsetting the, the, the office, you know, starting turmoil, I'm the guy that was bringing donuts, Karen, why was I bringing donuts into everybody? I got along trying to make everybody feel better when I walked into the room. Uh, one lady had a problem with me wearing my cologne, it bothered her, she, she had asthma, so I tried to stay away from her, did I not, Karen? Randy, did I not try to stay away from her? 'Cause I knew it irritated Travis, did I not try to stay away from her? I tried to do the right thing there too, so I don't know why all this, this trouble, I started inside the office, and then with officers, I can't wait to meet those officers, can't wait to meet them. So, uh, and then he's saying, well, there's more. Well, Mr. Mayor, let me tell you what, there's gonna be more for you too. There's gonna be more coming for you too, you say you could put more on my, on my, uh, uh, reasons for being fired? There's more coming for you too, Mr. Mayor. So, the reason is, and this isn't personal, I don't dislike this guy, I don't like what he does, I don't like the way he does business. I mean, from the very beginning of this investigation, he said, can we squash this?
Oh, no.
He's squashed it for three years.
Can we, is there any way to squash this? Well, I'll be able to prove that, ladies and gentlemen, I've got counsel, I'll be able to prove that.
I will too.
So, if I might sue me, because I can prove it, okay, it was recorded. So, I want you to get on, on there and say that, you didn't say that, 'cause if I play the recording, it's perjury. So anyway, the, the situation I've got here is, I, I love this town, and I love the people in it, I have been told, I've been, you know, the things that you all don't know, is that I'm at home in bed. I get a phone call, somebody's got my, I get, I've given out fifteen hundred cards in this town, whether or not, fifteen hundred business cards. People call me at home instead of calling the sheriff's dispatch. I put on a pair of blue jeans, house shoes and a sweatshirt, and I'll make that run so the sheriff's department doesn't have to, because they're busy, they got short men on the, I mean, I mean, they're short of people, I didn't mean short, man. They're short of men on the street, so I'll make the run, I'll make the run for them. You know, just a few weeks ago, they had a run at the park, you know, I was cutting grass, I was working in the yard, had leaves all over me, did I not, Randy, showed up at the park, and a minute I got out of the car, there was a disturbance at the park, it said, I'm your chief, so you get the excuse down to look, look right now, 'cause I was in sweats, a sweatshirt, didn't look like the chief of police, it looked like I stole the police car. So, it's, uh, it, but I went there and I took care of it, I didn't put in for that. Let me tell you some of the other things I've done. When the snow was hit here, when the snowstorms hit here, I knocked on every elderly person's door that I knew, just to make sure that they were okay, 'cause people were snowed in. I went to every door, can you send me to somebody else, or somebody else on the, do I need to go here? Where was the mayor? Went to Jason Ellis's memorial, where was the mayor? This is, you know, where Jason Ellis got off the road, I hate to bring him up, very, very brave man, but I showed up. Sheriff showed up, people in charge of the investigations showed up. Where the man was shot and killed, it's a four zero 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 eight zip code, Bloomfield. I showed up. I'll tell you something else I've done that you don't know. I care about the people in this, in this community so much that I found out some kids needed coats, did I not, Karen? I went out and bought children's coats out of my own pocket, and found places for those coats. There are so many things that I have done, that people out here do not know that I, I have done, because I enjoy being a small-town policeman. I enjoy it, when I was on local police, you couldn't do these things, you were too busy, but you wanted to. You wanna go check on people, you just haven't had the time to do it. So when I got this job out here, and the mayor's sitting right here, I didn't come down here looking for a chief's job, I came down here looking for a time, for a part-time police job. He said, I got nobody for the chief, I took it. I wasn't looking for this job, I wasn't looking for the chief's job. You know what, folks, if it wasn't for meeting the good people in this community, I'd be damned if, I knew I was stepping into this, you know, I probably would've went home, you know, grabbed a bourbon and sit back and said, man, I'm glad, didn't do that. Because everything that I've tried to do down here has been the right thing. There were two ladies that were just here earlier, you know, first time, you know, they worked down here at the local store, you know, I seen them, I was out walking the streets of Bloomfield, I gave them twenty dollars, said, go get yourself something to eat and drink. I don't know them that well, but I wanted to be the nice police chief. You know, I want them to see that I was a human being. You know, I, it's important for you all to see the human side of us, not, and everybody thought that I was gonna come down here with a hard hand, I didn't come down here with a hard hand at all. People, so there's people on the internet saying, oh, you're out here writing these elderly people tickets. Ladies and gentlemen, I haven't written the first ticket. If you can show me a ticket with my name on it, I'll give you my house. You know, I believe in, I believe in, if you're speeding, I could turn on those blue lights, and the front end of your car dips down, I know you're locking up those brakes, and we can wave at each other. And I've never had anybody wave at me with just one finger, it was all fine. So, the thing here is, is that I've always tried to do the right thing, I really have. You know, I've got nothing to hide, I've done nothing, nothing wrong here, nothing illegal here, I've always tried to take care of the people. All I did was, when Karen Beederman brought a complaint to me, I took it and ran with it. Then that, then that complaint started growing fingers. Then people started coming out of the woodwork like termites, wanting to give me more information, more information. You know, I'm giving the sheriff my, my files. And there's a lot of stuff that's on audio, that I still need to have transcribed, so I can give it to his detectives, and I've got, I've got faith, I've got faith in the sheriff will do the right thing, and Scott will be arrested, you know. But let me tell you this too, just make this clear. I don't have to be a policeman to take his case to the grand jury. You, 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 you could put up a case against somebody and take it to the grand jury. I don't have to be a policeman, so I've got that option still. I've also got the option to go to the attorney general's office, the F.B.I.
That's your time, Steve. Will you yield your time as well?
You have some questions, as we're done?
I know I didn't use all my time.
I added it all together, I had four minutes. When you said you yield your time, I added it on here.
So am I done?
That's all the time you asked.
I got a question for you, if Reed Stangland was on the panel, would you accept the position?
Out under him. Not working for him, I would not. I, I will not, I will not work for, I don't know if I wanna use the word, I will not work for somebody I don't trust, somebody that would, in my opinion, borderline corruption, but this has been going on for years, I'm saying borderline, in my opinion, I'm not saying there is corruption, don't wanna give you my reason to sue me, but he just said that, you know, he's got more stuff, I got more stuff, he wants to play that game. If I had any more, if you had any more stuff, why didn't you fire me for it? Why didn't you write me up for it? Because you're looking now, you're grasping, you're hunting, you're trying to protect yourself.
Why couldn't we just have fired Scott four years ago and avoided all this?
Go ahead.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Steve was the last person. Nobody else is on the list. Now, we still have forty minutes, because we said the meeting would be from six-thirty to eight-thirty. We can take other questions as long as you don't get plead, long and drawn out, so we can get other.
I don't, you, you put on your public comment, they had to sign up, if there's no other public comment, we can't have any other party. I don't wanna get us in trouble for breaking open meetings, this is the way it was spelled out. Now, if we wanna do this again at our next meeting, we will.
Public comment.
Yeah, but you, you stated in the meeting, six to six-thirty, you had to sign up.
Okay.
Okay.
Why don't we do, I make a motion.
We don't have.
We do this again. Excuse me. We have to go by the agenda that we set. It's a special session, and so with this special session, if it is not on here, we cannot do it. And I apologize for that. I just assumed we would have so many people signing up to speak, that we would fill that time up. So, it was a miscalculation.
We can't, because it's a special session, we have to go exactly by what the agenda says.
Okay, how about y'all, you got anything to say to us until eight-thirty? We're listening.
Okay, this is, this is about public comment, okay, I'll read it for you again. Okay, so those who have signed up between six and six-thirty will be given an opportunity to speak to the council on the topic of the recent firings and resignations of city employees, and the responsibilities of the elected city officials. Each person will be limited to five minutes, so that more people will be given an opportunity to address the council. So that is what we did, we have an end time at eight-thirty, but just because we completed that, doesn't mean we can fill that forty minutes.
Well, I think the council will, and then we have.
So I'm correct about this.
Will you state your questions?
Yes.
Thank you, and if anybody really wants to know the truth, please state your question.
Ask your question now.
We have to wait till the meeting's over.
Our, our next meeting is June nineteenth, I urge every one of you to be there.
Thank you, sir, and we appreciate you guys making this happen, the council will, stick around, I say if you wanna know the truth, stick around. If you don't, roll out.
So, I'm gonna make a motion. To intermediate, to adjournment. I'll say the motion. All of them, thank you.
All right, closing adjournment, meeting over.
Make sure Chris, you look down, that is not a brief adjournment.
I wanna make this clear, this is not personal, this is professional.
I know, I have a question, I would have asked.
You tell, he makes it, unless you.
The meeting is over.
One of the reasons listed on your termination letter says you have negative impact on city employees. And that, this is, we were terminated about a week ago, two weeks ago. So, I don't know how many city employees there are, I mean, there were two employees at the water company, resigned, stating that Chris, not currently creating a hostile work environment, Karen Beederman was fired with me, Scott resigned about two months ago, so who's left to pick? A couple?
Two more, one, she's been there.
So, do you remember any status or any issues at all with those two members, other than Cologne? I mean, if somebody didn't like their cologne, that's not a reason to fire them.
There was, there is one city council member, but I'm gonna let Randy come in here and discuss this. Randy?
Oh, no, it doesn't say city council member, it says city employees, right?
I know, but there is something that occurred. Uh, I made a run, uh, with sheriff's deputies on a man up in Chaplin, and he had a gun, he's inside the house, and the sheriff called me and asked to go up there with him. On the way out the door, one of the city employees made this statement to him, that, where's he going? Acting like such a big shot, and he said, well, really, he's going up here to back up the sheriff's department, guy's got a gun, he's got a family inside the house. Well, next thing you know, she's telling him, she said, I hope he gets shot, and I've done nothing to that woman.
But I'm glad we didn't fire her, right?
Yeah, right.
Exactly, so there's no status that you know of between you and.
None at all, no. The officer, I would like, if I have a problem with an officer. I've never had.
So we need a name of an officer, an officer of the city employees, everybody else is gone, so there's two, two left. They need to come forward and state their claim, and so the officer, what were you gonna say, Randy?
Mayor called me and asked me what had happened, and I told him what had happened. He asked if she specifically said his name, Steve Cameron's name, I was like, no, but that's who, that's who we were talking about.
You said, where's, where's he going?
Yeah, and, uh, she's, uh, he's very, but there is a small chance that she could have been referred to the gunman, right? And I said, well, I would doubt it, but yeah, I guess there is a small chance. I can't say beyond a reasonable doubt that he wasn't, and he said, well, that's what we're gonna go with.
Yeah, of course, and Chris, I have another. Did Chris, Doug, and so up at your home, telling you that Scott was his buddy and asking you to squash the investigation? Okay, also, what led you, what led you to tell Chris you were gonna resign after the investigation with Scott?
What led to me telling him I would resign, ladies and gentlemen, is that, uh, Travis, Travis, where you at?
Well, yes, sir.
Travis was on vacation in St. Louis. You tell the crowd, please, what happened in St. Louis.
I got a phone call from the mayor while I was on vacation, asking if I had heard anything from anybody in the city, that if I'd gotten a phone call from him, and I answered him and said, no, I'm on vacation. I said, the only person in the city that I've talked to at all is Randy, because he was here by himself, under my license, which was legal by the Division of Water. So if he had a question, I was, I was available by phone to answer. And he said, well, we've got a lot of problems inside the city, mostly involving our police department. And I kinda chuckled, I said, our police department, I said, you mean Steve? We have one. And he's, well, I'm not gonna go into that, he said, but we, we just got a lot of problems inside the city, including the police department. So, I hung up the phone from him, and I called Steve to see what, see what the problem was. I mean, I was acting as interim superintendent, so I felt like if there was something going on, I should do it. So, I called Steve to see what the problem was, Steve was unaware that there was a problem. So he contacted the mayor, and it went, you see where it went from there.
I called the mayor, and I said, what are you?
It was the Saturday.
Before I got fired.
Yeah, it was, it was the weekend before he got fired.
Well, I called the mayor, and I said, you wanna tell me what, what you're telling Travis? What is the problem with the police department? He said, I never said anything like that, Travis is lying. Yeah, there was no other problems between me and the mayor, other than this investigation. We were fine. Excuse me, Sean? Yes.
From the initial questioning of Scott.
If you, if you wanted me to term it in a way that I know, it would be, uh, there's several things, you know, intimidating witness, you know, threatening a witness, you know, because, you know, he, he.
We fired you after six months, but we let Scott heal for four years, for four years.
He, he fired me after six months, but Scott was still on for four years.
I mean, and Karen, neither one of you represent him?
No.
No, probably Mason.
No. None at all, none, not at all. He fired the person that brought me the investigation, and he fired the person that was doing it. I, I would love to answer that, but we got, we got an attorney that's suing the city, he's very careful, but it, it's more than hundreds. Anybody else have any questions? Can I have your all's attention, please, real quick? This is the man who made this happen.
Well, I tried, I tried.
This is the man that made it happen.